Now, I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll? Other persons, Bowersox.
Here.
Garrick.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Marlin. Roberts.
Here.
Smythe. Stevenson present? Mayor Pressing.
Here.
First item is approval of minutes of the previous meeting July 20th, 2009.
Still move?
Second.
Okay, motion by Stevenson, seconded by Bowersox. Any additions or corrections? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Brendan?
I had a suggestion, maybe this is what Charlie was thinking too, about the order, so that all of the broadband topics, which is, I imagine, what so many people are here to talk about tonight, could stay together. If we could move the school resource officer report after new business item number one, that would keep all the broadband piece together. So, if that's okay with people.
The resource officer go first.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Let him go first?
I didn't know about the length of that report, and I know so many people are here to talk about broadband and so...
Well, broadband is...
He really said it's very brief.
It's very brief. So, we'll just keep it the way it is?
Or no, we can move the school officer report ahead because he says it's very brief.
You want to move it to before reports of standing committees?
Yeah, or yeah.
Move it before old business.
Before old business?
Before old business.
So, that at least we didn't break up one topic into two parts, I guess?
All right, fine. Any objections to that?
No.
It's fine.
Okay.
I don't know whether we should, we could add this to the agenda of tonight's council meeting or to the committee meeting, but the issue from the township that should have been to council.
No, we have to have that on an agenda at a separate meeting. So, we'll bring it up.
Could that go, well, could we add that to the committee meeting? The special committee meeting?
I think it has to be posted on the agenda first.
Does it?
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right. Petitions and communications. Anyone who wants to say something other than about broadband to the Urbana City Council? Because broadband's coming up?
Yeah.
Okay, we will move on. All right, now, let's have the report of the school resource officer.
Good evening. This is the school resource officer report that's been requested a few times. Bryant Seraphin is the lieutenant in charge of our investigations division. Tim McNodd is our school resource officer. The school resource officer is in the investigation division, so I'm going to let them give you a brief overview, and they'll answer questions, or I'll be available too also.
As you said, my name's Bryant Seraphin. I'm lieutenant with the investigations division here at the Urbana Police Department. The school resource officer position is within the umbrella of the investigations division. So, here, there's a patrol division, a services division, and then the investigations, and that's where the SRO, and you'll hear us use that term tonight, so, school resource officer equals SRO. That's where that position resides. Quick, modern day history, the Urbana Police has had a school resource officer for about fifteen and a half years since December of 1993. There have been seven officers who have held the position, and currently, it's being held by investigator Tim McNodd. He's been with the department for about ten years, a little over, and he's been in this position for about two and a half years. Tonight's presentation is to give you an overview, to let you maybe get an idea about what the things are that he does every day, and what are some of the things that he doesn't do every day. So, having said that, I'll let Tim McNodd give you a brief presentation.
In the Urbana Police Department, we follow what we call the triad concept of the SRO, meaning there's basically three tenants, or I fulfill three distinct roles, that have law enforcement, that have a teacher, and that have an informal counselor. And I'll kind of go in a little bit detail about each one of those. The obvious one being law enforcement. As the SRO, in my role of law enforcement, I act as a liaison between the school and the police. The obvious thing I do while I'm there is, the textbook answer is uphold enforced laws of the United States, stay of Illinois, and the ordinance of the city of Urbana. Within that, I investigate crimes, and I take appropriate action, okay? That appropriate action could be anything from a custodial arrest to a notice to appear, a formal station adjustment, or more often than not, is what I would call handled by school. Example of what I mean by that, last year, there was a fight in the high school cafeteria. It was two, basically, best friends, and they were horseplay around, shoving each other back and forth, and they kind of, one pushed one harder than the other, and next thing you know, they're hitting each other, all right? It was a battery, true. But I sit down with the deans, generally with the deans, and the assistant principal in charge of discipline, and we kind of look at the situation, the people involved, the history of the people involved, the school, the police, and try and figure out the best way to handle the situation. This one was kind of a no-brainer, I think. It was best handled by the school, by school discipline, because it was just a typical, not typical, it was a high school fight, horseplay out of control. Contrary to that, we had an incident in school where a student came up behind another student, basically hit her in the back of the head, and started battering her, okay? Sat down at the school, and we investigated that incident, looked at it, and the school wanted an arrest made, because they looked at it, it was more of a deliberate attack. That one girl did nothing, she was hit from behind and beat up. They wanted criminal law enforcement taken, law enforcement action taken. So, I made a custodial arrest on that. Happens very seldom, actually, making arrests in the school. Generally, it's, I'd say, most of the time, it's assisting the deans in whatever the incident may be, whether it's fighting, graffiti in the bathroom, whatever, whatever questions they have in far as related to law enforcement, I try and help the deans, the school staff work through that. That's kind of my law enforcement role in the school. The next role I play is, where I spend probably the minority of my time, but it's what I would call my favorite part of the job, and that's the teacher. As a teacher, I'm, technically, I am a member of the faculty, and I support the school, supporting school rules and procedures. I provide law-related education to the students, parent, and staff. I provide educational resources for classrooms, district groups, community organizations, et cetera. For example, I, the part of this, one of the sponsors, an Operation Click program, which is a teen safe drive initiative, kind of a seatbelt program. I participate in the East Central Illinois Safe School Alliance. It's a forum to raise awareness and the anti-boying campaign against LGB students. Couple of things I've done, I've given presentations to English classes. I could go and talk to classes, and I teach them, or I use my life example as a police officer, and also from my experience in military, is the importance of writing, is that, you know, everything you do in the police world, and nowadays in military, you have to write a report on it. So, when I was in high school, I didn't think I would have to be writing reports on everything I do, so I tried to encourage students that, you know, writing is an essential task, an important skill, you kind of need no matter what you do. Let's see, I've also, there's an after-school program called Recapture. Students that are maybe falling behind in credits, they participate in a recapture after school and make up some of their recaptured credits, and several times, I've had what I call a question-and-answer session. The monitor, kind of emceed by a lady from Prairie Center, and the students, ahead of time, write out questions, write out questions that would like to ask a police officer, and I sit down for forty-five minutes, and we kind of have a question-and-answer session about anything and everything, and you can probably about imagine what kinds of questions teenagers ask police officers, but I mean, that's, I enjoy that, because you never know what you can be asked. I guess, probably even one of the smaller roles I've played, but it's probably my more favorite part of the job. Lastly, last tenant is that of informal counselor. And I call it an informal counselor because I work within my knowledge, training, and experiences as a law enforcement officer to help handle situations. Obviously, I'm not a certified therapist, I'm, I just go by my experience as a law enforcement officer and help people through situations. I work closely with school counselors, social workers, psychologists, nurses, teachers, et cetera, and I provide information and services to students, parents, and staff. Kind of my joke here is, when I talk to, when I do my freshman orientation, I kind of tell kids, and I have the school resource officer, my middle name is Resource, you know, so my, big part of my job is being a resource for students, staff, and parents. Example, last year, there was a student came to me, she's asking me questions about the court process and proceedings of a criminal court process in reference to her sister, who was killed in a vehicle versus pedestrian accident, and it was an ongoing court process that, and she was having a hard time dealing with the situation. I, like I said, not a certified therapist, but I knew, I could tell this girl was really struggling with what was going on, and so I talked to her about it, and I completed a referral to Urbana School-based Health Clinic, and she started seeing the certified therapist there, and later on, she thanked me for it, and it went very well. So, I connect people with people who can help them, basically. That's part of my, a big part of my job as a resource officer. How I spend my time, let's see. I'm the only resource officer for the city of Urbana, so I have an office in the high school, I spend the majority of the time in the high school, and you can tell by this graph here, that I charge my hours and my activities and everything I did for a full year, and it came right up to where I spend about two-thirds of my time in the high school, about a third of my time in middle school, and every now and again, the different elementary schools, for these odd and then things, might be talking to a fourth grade student about stealing or something, or, you know, just kind of giving more of a little lecture or learning point there. But most of my time is in the high school, and about a third is in the middle school. How I spend my time, this kind of goes into the way the database worked, there was basically four different categories, or five different categories that my time would be charted under. It would be advising mentoring, administrative, and law enforcement, and then the classroom activity, school preparation. Law enforcement is about a third of my time, and that would include just kind of what it sounds like, I mean, be handling the investigation of an incident in school, it would include the writing a report for whatever the incident was. Advising mentoring is probably where I spend most of my time, excuse me, and that's answering questions of the school staff. The school staff comes to me a lot for just, I mean, how to handle a situation of something happening in school, how to handle if there's juvenile sex offenders in school, you know, what's the legal process for them being in school, and, like I said, I'm basically their resource for law enforcement questions. Again, I don't always have all the answers when I get these questions, but I will go and direct them to the right people or find the answers for them. And administrative is weekly meetings at school, report-writing stuff, and just to kind of the, actually, logging stuff into this database, I mean, the more administrative side of things. Next slide is a, each one, these are the four, or five major categories, and within those, this is a smaller breakdown of what I did. As far as, again, the biggest, two biggest things being investigations, and that would be the actual investigating of an incident within the school. You know, talking, interviewing everybody involved, working with the school staff, and then, if you add up the things there, begins about a third of my time is spent advising school staff, parents, and students. And that's answering law enforcement-related questions, making referrals to the appropriate resource, or whatever resources individual needs, a big part of my job. Patrol school facilities. I attend most all home sporting events, major events, football games, basketball games, homecomings, proms, I've been doing a number of proms in my life now, so, and I'm, the biggest part of my job is to kind of be there and answer questions to the school whenever they have questions, and if something does happen as far as law enforcement, you know, I'm there to help out, sort through whatever that situation is. That's kind of what I do in a nutshell. So, questions?
Dennis Roberts.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Actually, we had an intent to have a report either annually or a couple of times a year from the resource officer, and for many years past, and we really never had had a report. This is really the first one that I'm aware of that we've had here in front of the city council room, so I appreciate your coming up and explaining it.
You're welcome.
You've indicated what you've, what you're doing, how you spend your day and everything. Do you have any figures about how many people have come to you for help, criminal, you know, children who have situations where they're involved in a court activity that require assistance, or how many, do you have some of the figures of how often you have to advise people? You've said you do it fairly often, you explained a couple of examples, but do you have, like, seven such cases or incidents a year? Do you have twenty-two? I mean, do you just have three or four? What's the weight of activity in advising relating to juveniles who are involved in a court procedure?
Specifically, a court procedure, I don't know, as far as advising students, I mean, I get stopped in the hallway about every day, walking through the hallway, but somebody asks me about why they got a speeding ticket, if my license still suspended, when will I get it back? I mean, that's almost a daily occurrence is to, kind of, why did the police do this? I'm kind of, they come to me for everything, it's kind of my fault, apparently, but no. I, yeah, I, that's almost a daily occurrence. As far as specific things, as far as their, how their court case is, I don't keep track of that, other than in the chart here, it says about nine percent of my time was spent advising students in some fashion. It may not be directly law enforcement-related, but I'd say that was on a minor note, I mean, probably not quite daily, but pretty close. I mean, I get stopped quite often, just off-the-wall questions about anything police-related, so...
Well, I guess what I'm asking is because I'm interested in knowing how comfortable students are in approaching an officer, and you're in their milieu, you're at the school, they get to know you visually. I guess I'm just trying to get an idea of how, what the student body, how comfortable they are with, you know, working with a police officer and asking questions, because sometimes it can be intimidating, they may be nervous about it. So, it sounds like you get a lot of questions.
And the way we do the SRO job, I wear plain clothes, shirt and tie every day, so I think that's a plus, because I'm less intimidating than being a uniformed officer in there. And that's when, I mean, beginning school year, if you look at my, if you would look at my data beginning school year towards a later school year, my patrolling school facilities as well will be a lot higher beginning school year, because I spend a lot more time in the cafeteria, I spend a lot more time at school dismissals, just getting those students, just being visible. And I mean, my thing is, and I do, I talk to freshmen during freshman orientation, I try to tell the kids, like, I'm not a scary person, I try not to present myself as a scary person, I want to be approachable, I have a little more my offices, I got an open-door policy, have questions, come talk to me. That's part of my job I enjoy. I mean, I could be out and about in the mall, or ordering food at fast food, and be a high school kid there, knows me, says hi, talks, I mean, it's, I've never had a negative experience in the community with somebody that's gone to school at Urbana.
In the instance where you indicated that there was, one example of horseplay, and there was one example where the school felt that there was actually a criminal intent, and it may result, you said, in an arrest in the school. If there was an arrest in the school, do you participate in that yourself?
Absolutely.
Or does an officer come, who's in uniform, to do the arresting?
I'm the investigating officer for that case, I mean, I handle the whole case. Only thing I don't do, because I don't have a marked squad card, is I don't actually transform, so once it comes time to arrest them, I'll call for a marked unit, and we have a procedure that we worked out with the principal, where we park in the, a circle drive, we bring kids out kind of in the back hallway, so we kind of make it, keep it low-key.
And I was wondering about that, because I was wondering if your preferred method would be to wait until after-school hours to make that arrest, or, I mean, do you guys talk about these questions?
And I'll leave a lot of that to the school, because, I mean, it's my job to investigate the crime and deal with it, and Laura Taylor, the principal, she's the, not really elected to this, but she's the principal of the school, so, I mean, she has to deal with all the other issues, so, I mean, we work very closely as far as the best time, you know, we may keep a kid in the office for a little while, you know, if there's an open lunch, until lunch is over, and take them out after the open lunch. I mean, we try to, you know, do our best to keep things like that at a minimum. But the bottom line is up to the principal is how and when she wants me to do things.
Do you have any interaction with students who may be on probation for some reason, who are attending school?
No, direct. It's not like I check on them to see how they're doing, unless a probation officer, actually, they check themselves, they might ask me if I see them in the hallways, or see them other places, they might ask if I have any issues with the student, or, I mean, just may have, talk about how the student's doing in school, but as far as me actually directly checking on them, make sure they're going to school and stuff, that's actually the job of the probation officer.
Okay. It helps to know exactly what the parameters of your responsibilities are.
But in that same note, though, if I have a dealing with that student, I will let their probation officer know that the student was involved in something.
Okay, thank you.
Robert Lewis.
I'd like to, I worked with 116 on the Equity Committee for some years. Since you've been involved with the schools over the years, has the environment for the children improved, do you think, or is it stabilized, or can you give me a sense of what that might be at this point?
My personal opinion is it has improved a lot, and I allow that to the, I don't, I mean, I credit the current administration in the schools for a lot of that. I think the administration in the high school and in middle school both, but more specifically the high school, that's where I've seen the biggest change, and I think we have some stats, I know, what, four years ago, there was, I think, sixty fights? And then twenty-seven, three years ago, last year was ten, this year is twelve. So, we're talking about a huge reduction there, and a lot of that is because of, again, this is my opinion, that, I mean, the school, their staff, they're supporting one another, they've come up with some rules and guidelines, and they're enforcing the rules in the schools, and that structured environment, I think, is good for the students, and, I mean, they know what they can and can't do, and it's just, the staff there doesn't take a lot of, they don't mess around much. I mean, if the kid's not doing what they're supposed to, they'll, the assistant principal takes care of that, they'll put them on a contract, they'll move them to a school where they're better suited, I mean, they're very concerned about the atmosphere of the school. Last year, I heard teachers and people just in conversations talking about how just the environment, the, not really the orbit, the environment of the school just seemed better, I mean, more friendly, seemed lighter, seemed less spice, less tense, you know, I mean, I've seen, in the last few years, I've seen a very positive change within the high school especially. And I think a lot of that is credit the current staff there and the work they've been doing to try and bring their scores up and do everything they can to do what the school needs to do.
Thank you.
Heather.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. My daughter will be a junior at Urbana High, and I've noticed a difference when I go to the school from her freshman year till the end of last year, just, I also serve on the disciplinary committee, and just the general attitude of the children, I think, when they found out their scores were going up and things like that, just generally in the school, the children feel more positive about themselves, and in turn, when that happens, positive things happen in the school, and Mr. McNodd is absolutely correct, the staff at the high school now is, they're one of kinds. Laura Taylor is doing a superb job as principal of the high school, and so, thanks for all you do.
You're welcome.
David.
Just a quick one. This is a required reporting role for, if you encounter signs of child abuse or something like that, isn't it, you also have the duty to go ahead and inform the authorities of that? Is that something you've had to deal with?
That's a mandatory, that's what requires me as a police officer in general. So, yes, if I'm, the school notifies me of something they think is not right, and I have to make a DCFS call, and, I mean, that's kind of part of a police officer's job, I mean, it's not that uncommon that we have to notify DCFS because we're mandated reporters.
Okay.
So, yes, that has happened.
Thank you very much. Okay, I guess we'll put the, any other reports of officers until afterwards. Let's start under old business, big broadband project, public input and discussion. Does anyone have questions or comments they'd like to offer at this point? All right. Is there someone? Okay, come on up. Do you want to wait until they do some presentation? Because if you want to ask your question now, they can direct their answers when they give their presentation.
I'm representing the EAC, so that's fair, I suppose.
Okay. Anyone else? Did you want to say something?
No, I guess my only suggestion was, yeah, that if the public had questions, they could have a chance to ask them, but then we invite, I think, the three representatives here from the university up to talk about the pieces of the project and where it stands, and then have a chance to answer council questions, too.
Okay. Would the broadband experts please come forward?
We can find a third chair, so feel free if you'd like to all come up.
And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Mike Smelter, Director of Networking at the University.
Yes.
Abdullah Kalimat, I live at 601 California in Urbana.
Okay.
Ambisha, I live at 1117 Mayfair and Sherrit.
Okay, thank you very much.
Probably the most interesting news and the most timely news is we have gotten the results of the survey of the community in terms of determining what areas were underserved and what areas would qualify for the grant. And if I can find my way through the PC here, oops. I don't want to say clear, but I'll figure it out. There is a picture I'd like to show. At times like this, I'm happy I'm a Macintosh guy.
Slide the mic over so we can do it.
Is that it right there? I'll tell you what, we can use that. Here, Charlie, you're a PC guy.
Yeah.
There's a thumb drive in there, we want to see some pictures of it. My computer. Ah, there you go.
And while you guys are pulling that up, I just wanted to thank you three, both for, all for coming. These folks have done, served the impossible by trying to put together a grant application so quickly, and hopefully, we'll try to be efficient with your time here tonight. To get everything done for the government deadlines is impossible, and you're doing the impossible, so, thanks for joining us here.
We have had lots of help. The broadband stimulus program had some particular rules about what areas could qualify to be in the grant proposal process, at least in terms of infrastructure. And those are the two parts that I'm involved with. Abdul's involved in the other two parts, and I don't want to in any way diminish what's going on there. But in terms of the infrastructure parts, areas had to qualify as being underserved, and the way that was done was, there were three different definitions. The definition that worked for this area was if we could show that forty percent or less of the residents, or the households, actually, in that census block group, and everything was done by census block groups, if forty percent or less subscribed to broadband. And we don't have that information, that wasn't in the last census, there wasn't broadband when the last census was done. So, literally, we had to have people go door-to-door over the last week asking questions. And as a result of that, I think the last time I was here, we spent some time talking about different areas that might be involved in the, or might be involved in the program. Let me blow this up one more time. There we go. And it's pretty much come down to this, these are the census tracts within both Champaign and Urbana, the ones that are marked in yellow, that under the definition of broadband that we inherited from the FCC, these qualify to at least participate in the program. There ended up being, I think, five census tracts in Urbana and I think there's six in Champaign. One of the rules was that a service area had to be contiguous of block groups. But then they also said we could have more than one service area. So we're actually going to be proposing four separate service areas. One of them are the, I guess it's eight block groups that are grouped together in kind of a funny shape there. And then there's one in Urbana and two in Champaign that are kind of outliers. People worked all weekend, balled yesterday, late into the evening and a lot today, crunching these numbers, figuring out ways that we could maximize the number of block groups that could be involved. And this is what we ended up with. So this is the area that we will be proposing a fiber to the home pilot project. And it truly is a pilot project, get things started, make sure it all works the way we think it's going to work, prove the technology, give the city council, both here in Champaign, a higher level of comfort that this is a technology that, you know, you want to be involved in going forward. And that's part of the grant. The second part of the grant, in, in many ways, is more significant. And that is what they're referring to as the middle mile project. And the middle mile project really involves almost the entire community, uh, does involve all of Urbana, all of Champaign, parts of Savoy and little parts of Champaign County. And those are all the areas there that are shaded in blue. And in those areas, I actually haven't counted them and at some point I'm going to have to, there are easily a hundred what are referred to as anchor institutions. A school is an anchor institution, a library is an anchor institution, a, a police station, a fire station, a senior citizen center, a park district, a boys' club, Salem Baptist Church. There are a variety of places that would call, would be, would consider an anchor institution because there were people gather. In many cases, uh, in the past, in this community, they've gathered to do computing things. There's public computer labs in many of those facilities. So the second part of the proposal is to build a series of seven fiber rings through the community that link up all of these anchor institutions. The rings, uh, I don't know that we want to spend the time looking at where each ring goes, but suffice to say, they, or there's three major rings that go primarily through Urbana, there's four major rings that go primarily through Champaign. Every ring goes through both Urbana and Champaign because it's truly a Champaign and Urbana project. They all start in Urbana and they all end in Champaign, or else they all start in Champaign and end in Urbana, depending which way you want to look at it. They're a ring, you can go around the ring either direction. There is one that goes down, dips down into Savoy to provide connectivity to the fire station down there and the new school that, uh, Unit Four plans to build in Savoy. We'd also like to get to Willard Airport off that same ring. So there's good public reasons for where the rings go. They sometimes take circuitous routes, but that's usually to get closer to a fire station or to get closer to a school or just because that makes it easier to eventually get that done. Long term, those rings also could be the base for doing fiber to the home throughout the whole community. Because once you have the fiber out there, you can then, you could add, for instance, adding this one area census track 12 dot one dash two way over in West Champaign, that's possible because there's a ring that goes out there that could provide connectivity to that area. That, that area qualified, so that's not a particularly hard thing to do. It's conceivable that the public consortium that you will hopefully approve later on this evening would decide, come back to the city council and say, we want to do the whole community. Or these rings also would open the door for a private company to say, well, we really want to do Southeast Urbana. And if we can tap into the fiber in Southeast Urbana, some company may step up and say, yeah, we'll do, you know, everything south of Kirby or Florida Avenue and East Ave Street. And the ring would allow them to do that because they could get access to connectivity to spread, to spread it out from there. It would end up in kind of a helter-skeeter way if you did that, but as long as the whole community eventually gets served, you know, that could be fine. So that's really the first two parts of it. The way the Commerce Commission has awarded, made the grant program, there's actually three separate grants we will be applying for. One is this infrastructure, which is this two-headed thing with the rings and then also the fiber to the home section. And then there's two other sections that Abdul's involved in, and I'm just going to turn it over to him.
Thank you. Well, it's good to be here finally presenting a definite plan as an outcome of many discussions, public forums, multiple committee meetings and consultations at all levels of community life. Uh, I'm going to speak about the two parts. One is a public computing program, the other is the sustainability of that program. Our project has three parts to it. Now, when we approach this from the standpoint of the digital divide, we're looking at it from the early steps, what is a mouse? What is a keyboard? What is, uh, what is a computer? But we're also looking at the high end because the digital divide obviously exists at all levels of computational activity. Uh, the first part of the program has to do with a network of public computing centers. As we all know, uh, this area has been a leader, uh, a global leader in the development of the public use of technology. Uh, more, most recently, the work of PrairieNet, uh, which was a recipient of a Technology Opportunity Program grant, the grant program that precedes the current one. So TOP, Technology Opportunity Program, now is followed by BTOP, the Broadband Technology Opportunity Program. Just to give you an idea of the rollout of this program, TOP granted a hundred and twenty-some million dollars over more than ten years to six hundred and six projects. The current program is granting seven point two billion dollars to possibly over a thousand or fifteen hundred projects over two years. So this is a, um, an unusual program that has everyone scrambling. And yet, at the same time, we think we'll meet the deadline for this, which is October fourteenth. Okay, the three parts of our program, first, given the fact that there is a whole network of public computing centers, what we want to do is to essentially identify those centers that exist, uh, provide upgrade of equipment and provide support for teaching and instruction in those centers. That's a very unique aspect of our program. In other words, we're talking about a comprehensive program in both cities to beef up public computing. Our approach is to identify these public computing centers by various sectors. So for example, we've identified, uh, schools, libraries, homeless shelters, uh, women, shelters for women, early education, the juvenile detention center, I mean, there's a whole set of activities because the legislation specifically targets vulnerable populations. Because as we know, the digital divide is really a reflection of the historic social and economic divides that exist in our community. And many people are, have been early adopters in this community because of the university and so on. And yet, at the same time, there are people who are being left behind. And so this is a legislation that directly targets vulnerable populations. The second, uh, aspect of our, uh, program is the creation of a major public computing center in the community. As you all know, at the university and in the city government, when something goes wrong with a computer, with software or something, people pick up the phone and call an IT department. And then they, and respond to that. Well, in the community, often when there's a public computing center, something goes wrong, well, eventually that equipment is just moved to the closet because not too much happens. That is the historic experience. Therefore, what we want to do is to have one lab that, incidentally, cites that the, of the university has agreed as an in-kind contribution to service that lab. So there'll be a lab in the community with advanced equipment that will in turn serve as the IT department of this thirty-five or forty-five public computing centers. We hope to be able to provide something like a help desk that would respond to problems over a thirty-six or forty-eight hour period. Uh, this again would be a remarkable achievement that would distinguish us in relation to what, uh, most other cities provide. And the third part of this is the mobilization of students. And we're looking to have, over the course of the three years of this grant, a, a three-part, uh, program, which would start with a course on broadband that would cover all of the aspects. These lectures would be taped and be put online, so the entire community would have access to this information. The second, uh, part of the three-part, uh, sequence would be a summer internship program. We're looking to, uh, mobilize at least fifty students, with a third coming from the university, a third coming from Parkland and a third coming from the area high schools to together form teams to fan out into the community to do what we call IT squared. Information technology for institutional transformation. So we're talking about training boards and staffs, we're talking about building websites, building listservs, digitizing information so that these websites can really reflect the life of organizations and, and generally developing portals of information for all aspects of the community, again, specifically for the vulnerable populations that have not yet taken up this technology. And those three parts of the, of our program above ground, uh, we think we can place in a sustainable mode because the business model that the public agency, we hope, will be working by, will generate revenue that will, uh, continue to fund the public computing activity after the end of the grant. This is a crisis really of all previous, uh, grant-funded projects because the money runs out. When the money runs out, you got to have a way to continue it or the plug is pulled. And so what we're talking about now is having a project that itself generates enough revenue to keep this public computing aspect going. And, uh, we hope this will be a bridge to the future so that all of the people who live in this, uh, two cities can be part of the information revolution. Thank you.
I'm here tonight to represent PrairieNet in its newest incarnation as part of the Community Informatics Initiative. I am one of the co-founders of PrairieNet about fifteen years ago and currently the Director of the Community Informatics Initiative at UI. And PrairieNet is a part of it now. There's just three things that, um, I wanted to tell you about this evening. I also wanted, as Mr. Bowersox said, to, to thank everyone in the community and in the university who has put so much effort. From the, the kids who volunteered to go out and do the household surveys to, you know, all of you who has spent so much time going over the details of this proposal. Second, I want to express my excitement. I see this as really a once in a lifetime opportunity to advance the, the tradition and the work of PrairieNet. Um, to, to ratchet it up at least in order of magnitude and to carry on its tradition and, and service into the twenty-first century. I really see this grant as an opportunity to help our most vulnerable residents use technology to improve their chances and to build their capacity in really the core areas of our society. Health, public safety, education, economic development and, um, and the well-being of our underserved children. And third, I want to convey my confidence in the UC2B process. As part of this process, I provided information and, and data from PrairieNet and its history. I've also been encouraged to bring my expertise and my experience to the table. And I've collaborated with the UC2B planning, talking to as many of the institutions that we've had a long relationship with, with PrairieNet, to get their ideas. I really welcome the new ideas that UC2B is bringing forth. I think this really is a bridge from the work that so many of us in the university and community have done with PrairieNet, a bridge to kind of the next generation of what that can be, what public computing can be for all of us. And, um, finally, I just also want to let you know that I'm really confident that we'll get this grant.
I left out some good stuff.
Well, please edit.
But I always talk too long and don't give Abdul enough chance, so I. People want to know, how is this going to work? I mean, you can fiber into my home, how does it get back to the internet? What's the equipment to look like in my home? In theory, we were going to have one of the little boxes that might sit in your home today, but the delivery people didn't quite get that done. So we'll show you that some other time. And there's actually some choices there, there could be little boxes that's in your home or could sit outside on the side of your home. And people may decide they want one or the other. In terms of how it actually kind of looks, in terms of the circuit, we have pictures. Yeah, that's, that's the least, that, this is the business one, let's not start with that. We'll start with this one. Uh, this is what it would look like for a home environment. And essentially, this is using a technology, uh, it's fiber, but it's also using a technology that uses waves of light in different colors to deliver a different signal to a different home. So if you were to start, let's start at the commercial internet. And let's say, um, you were using a commercial ISP that might be providing services over that. Your tra, your traffic would come from the commercial internet down to the ISP here, would come out to one of the switches that eventually come out to a hut. Uh, the hut may not actually look like a hut, the hut may be part of another building, but it's a place where the equipment is stored that turns the electrical signals into specific wavelengths of light that then go out into the community. There's one piece of fiber, just a little tiny piece of fiber about the size of your hair, that takes the signal to thirty-two different homes out of a filter out in the field. And this is called passive optical ethernet because there's no electronics out in the field. This can be buried in the ground, you don't have to run power to it, you don't have to heat it, you don't have to cool it, just bury it and protect it and you're done. And this one little strand of fiber then is divided by this filter out into thirty-two different colors of light. And those thirty-two different colors of light go out to thirty-two different customers. Uh, so it's very efficient in terms of how it uses fiber. When you get back to this hut, instead of having sixty-four strands of fiber coming back here, you have one. Typical ethernet situations now would have two strands of fiber for each customer. This not only uses a single strand, but then it gets divided out by thirty-two. So it uses the fiber fairly efficiently, which means you less, need less of it. Out at the house side, this blow up up here, uh, there's a device called an ONT, an Optical Network Terminal. And that has several ports on it. One of those ports could plug into a little cable router, as they sometimes call them. It'll have wireless, it could have a couple of ports to plug in multiple computers. On a second port, you could have an IPTV service. And that's one of the services that we anticipate people offering over this, this network. And you could have the IPTV service from one company and you could have your internet from another company if you want. The technology supports having multiple providers over the same fiber into your home. So that's maybe more detailed than you wanted, but that's how the, uh, that part of it works. Another thing that happens is businesses, um, let's take an institution maybe like Carl Clinic. Carl Clinic has got a main clinic, they've got branch clinics in South Urbana, they've got some in South Champaign. They have needs to get information securely because of medical privacy and so forth from one facility to another. The same facility, the exact same equipment could be used to facilitate that. Instead of the internet being in there, they would merely just plug all the Carl Clinic, uh, buildings into each other. Now, we would charge them something for that and I'm sure they would gladly pay something for that because that's a worthwhile service for them. They, they currently pay a lot to have that done. So there's a business applications for this and there's also residential applications for this. And it all uses the same equipment, kind of in the same way, so it's very versatile equipment. This particular equipment is not widely deployed in the United States right now, it's, uh, deployed in Korea. We would be somewhat of a pioneer, but the idea of splitting up the, the light into different wavelengths, that is used all the time, it's just not used for home delivery. So we would be a little bit ahead of the curve. The stimulus money and the funding for that is something that probably our grandchildren will be paying for. It's fair to say, this network is something our grandchildren can use. It'll last that long. So we're actually doing something for our grandchildren by putting this in, assuming your grandchildren stick around.
Mike, then I'm going to ask you the obvious question, why is, why are we limiting homes to a hundred megabits?
We're not, I'm glad you asked that question. The ONTs come in different sizes and costs. Right now, there's probably not an overwhelming use case for a gig to the home. But the ONTs, you know, every five or six years, you're probably going to replace them. And in the normal recycling of new electronics at the home, they could become a gig at some point in the future. The.
The limit isn't the fiber, the limit's the hardware.
Yes, the limit is actually just the gear that goes into the home. The, the central electronics back up here, the, the optical light, uh, transmission unit up here, that's the same, whether it's driving gig to the home or a hundred meg to the home. Right now, most of the electronics that are made for home use are a hundred meg. You could put more expensive gig electronics in a home, but they're, the use case for that's probably not right there. So you could certainly, and if you wanted, Charlie, if you wanted a gig to your home, that would be available just for you. But you'd probably pay a little more for that.
I was wanting to ask you about the finances, you're talking about sort of break even. If this is providing a valuable service, are you considering having it be more of a utility concept? a utility concept?
Another good segue question. One of the things that we have wrestled with all along, and there's some people in the room here who have wrestled with us, is how do we make this affordable to certainly the audiences, the people we're talking about, is having as customers, which these are some of the lower-income areas of town. We have been able to get a commitment from the university's Office of Public Engagement, the Vice Chancellor, to actually provide free Internet for this community for five years. The Internet itself will be free, we can't make all of the service parts free because there are going to be real costs in terms of running the network, but this, there will not be a bandwidth charge associated with that service for the low-income residents. We can make that available to schools, we can make that available to nonprofits, we can make that available to the city of Urbana. That's huge. That just happened last week. I think this is the first time we've spoken publicly about it. We thank Steve Sonka, the Vice Chancellor, and Chancellor Richard Herman for doing that. That's big.
Okay, but for other services, for other services that have commercial applications or people want to buy something above basic...
Oh, sure.
...Internet, wouldn't it be reasonable to charge some kind of a fee?
Oh, yes. Even this low-end service, it's going to be in the ballpark of $19, $20 a month, but it'll be tremendously faster than anything else you can buy for twice or three times that price today. And again, it's going to be really nice. The commercial entities, yeah, they would pay market rates, but we can afford to do this at, you know, less than what AT&amp;T does because we're not trying to show a profit for our shareholders. So the business-to-business connection I talked about for Carl, or for anybody that's like Carl, that has multiple facilities, I'm pretty sure they will be able to save money by moving to the service, and that those rates will help finance this moving The, I don't know if Brandon was able to distribute those. We've had some specialists working on a financial plan, and I wish I could say I understood every nuance of it, but I've only seen it for about three hours or so. But they took a lot of assumptions that we gave them in terms of how many customers we thought we would sign up over a period of time, what rates we were going to charge, and so forth and so on. Their analysis shows that what we're talking about doing, if we're going to be able to sign up a couple thousand customers in these first couple of years, that this will cash flow positive, that we'll have enough cash flow, we'll be able to borrow some money in years three, four, and five, and grow the system organically. It won't cover the whole city right away, but if we can invest another $2 or $3 million every year for the next five to six years, we can cover an awful lot of neighborhoods. So I'll feel better about that after we're a year or two into this and, you know, see how some of our projections turn into reality. But at least upfront, this looks like this has the potential to be sustainable, which is part of it. But part of that money is also going to Abdul's Community Help Desk Program, if you will, and the education program. So we're not only funding the growth of that, we're also putting significant resources into making sure this program is sustainable as well. It's kind of a two-pronged approach.
Does that all have to be worked out before the grant is accepted, or do we have time to perfect that after the grant?
The projections that we're sending off to, and we should talk a little bit about timetable because that's interesting.
Yes.
The projections we will be submitting for the two grant proposals, or the two, most of the state and the federal proposal, are specifically for the infrastructure project, the Community Technology Center project, and the Sustainable Adoption Program. They all have separate budgets per se. But their budget, the other two budgets, show income from this budget, and yet, once the grant runs out. The process is, the state has done both a good and a bad thing to us. They have made $50 million available for matching funds for local applications in the broadband stimulus program. Of that, and that $50 million's already been signed into law, it's there. It was part of the state capital program. They've also ruled, or the people making the rules of this, has said that no one project can get more than $5 million out of that pool, or 10% of their project, whichever is less. So if we have, say, a $35 million project, we can ask for $3.5 million. So at least, the state is going to support 10 different programs. They're going to make all the money available in this first round. I like our chances of being one of the 10 best projects coming from the state of Illinois. I've seen, I've heard about a lot of the other projects, some of them are pretty good, some of them aren't so good. Before this came out and we knew that we needed to be in the top 10, I would have put us in the top five, but I'm perfectly happy to be in the top 10. That application needs to begin in about 36 hours. It needs to be in noon on Wednesday. I'm not doing my math well, but that's real soon. So we are scrambling. I mean, literally this afternoon, this map was just drawn for the first time, we nailed down exactly what areas for the fiber. People you see up here doing an awful lot of writing, they haven't been doing a lot of writing for the last couple of days, and continue to do a lot of writing. It would be really useful in terms of our overall budget to get that matched, that $3.5 million from the state. We probably have that much locally arranged in terms of some private companies and what the cities have talked about putting in, what the universities talked about putting in. But we'd like to have this about a $35 to $40 million project, and if we can pull the state contribution we'd like, we can get there. So our first goal is to get, the state's asking for probably about two-thirds of what the federal government wants in terms of the grant. So after Wednesday, we'll have two-thirds of the grant written. The federal grant is due a week from Wednesday. So there's still more writing to do, more things to get finished, but this is going to be boom, 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 boom. We'll find out on Tuesday, the 11th, what we get from the state. And on Wednesday, the 12th, that's when we have to submit the grant to the university's office. They do some processing to make sure that we've fulfilled all the legal and financial requirements of the grant, and it actually gets sent in on Friday, the 14th. So a lot of things are happening extremely quickly. We're very grateful for what the state has done, but we occasionally curse them at the same time in terms of accelerating the schedule a little bit.
Okay. Are you willing to take questions not only from the council but also from the audience?
As long as anybody wants to ask them, and you're willing to sit here.
Okay. Is there anyone from the audience that has a question? Yes, ma'am, would you...
I was wondering, this education you're talking about, would that include community, families, community at large, either libraries or other places?
Yes, very... Yes, thank you for the question, very much so. As I was indicating, these public computing centers really are throughout the entire community. And virtually every one is either open to the entire community, such as the public libraries, or is open to a specific constituency, you know, such as a Head Start program, or people who are in homeless centers, or people who are in community centers of some kind. So there is an openness to this. But one of the things that the grant is pushing us to do is to increase the hours of availability of public computing. And so the new lab that we'll be creating will have really extended hours. I mean, we're talking about hours that couldn't go as late as 10:00 or midnight, so that we can catch people who have different lifestyles. And we'll also be making arrangements so that specific classes will be held. For example, we've thought about having a course designed for, say, church secretaries, where we would teach Quicken and different kinds of file management and so on, so that increases the ability of organizations in the community to operate on a basis comparable to the larger institutions and have a greater efficiency to their operation. Also, I think the, one of the plans we have has to do with curriculum development. Now, there are various kinds of curricular materials. We are not as advanced in this country as, say, in Europe, where there is a generally-accepted European computer driving license, where there are general standards that are applied and that people then qualify in some general way. Well, we want to try to be able to bring people together from these public computing centers, the staffs, and look at these generic curriculum materials in order to fashion and develop our own. And since this mega lab in the community is going to have new media cultural production facilities, then we actually see developing our own video-based curriculum materials using instructors from Champaign-Urbana, so that when people look at them, they'll not be seeing people from either coast, they'll be seeing their neighbors and people that they know. And so we think this approach is not only going to be really useful for the entire community, but we think we have the ability to actually become leaders, not only in the state, but comparable with the history of the University of Illinois, leaders for the country as a whole.
Brandon?
I wanted to just underline one thing there, and that is that the training will not just be about computing stuff in a vacuum, but will also be integrating that, say, with personal financial management, or I was talking with school district, or I was talking with United Way today. They said, "Oh, it would be really great if we could integrate, you know, make more digital resources and training material related to parenting." The school district said, "Yeah, it'd be great if we could have like an education portal and have homework help for parents and kids." So we provide the different, you know, levels and styles of education and training. It might be how to use, you know, computers just per se and the Internet, but very much of it will be integrated, as Abdul said, with real things that people want to accomplish.
For real people.
For real people, as PrairieNet always has, in the areas of, you know, public health and safety and education and parenting and so forth. And also that the, we're working really hard so that the process is open after we get the grant, so that we will have task force advisory groups with parents, you know, with real people who will help us shape the kind of training that they would like to see happen as we move forward through the years.
Okay. Sir, would you like to ask a question?
Yes, I have a...
Would you stand, please, so we can hear you a little bit better?
I have a technical question on capacity, okay? Now, I've got three at home that can make the computer walk up a wall of chalk, and I can't even figure out how to turn it off. But via, hey, suppose these brainchild decides they want to do, let's say, let's pull a figure, 700 downloads, which is quite a bit. Would this detract from the system enough to where that would be a concern, or would this just be, oh, well, they did 700 downloads.
We'll assume for a moment that these are 700 legal downloads.
Well, they are legal downloads.
Yes, 700 legal downloads. Yes, this system will have enough capacity to handle that sort of thing just fine. Each home on this, what we're calling maybe the community service network, will have 100 megabits per second of capacity within the community. And each individual household that's participating in this will have 5 megabits per second of capacity to the Internet. And 5 megabits per second is, you know, it'll take a...
Really fast.
It'll take a little while for your 700 downloads to get there, but it's a significant amount of bandwidth. And if experience shows that we can make that more, fine, but we'll start at that and make sure that works out for everybody. We're going to have a gigabit per second to the Internet itself, and that's actually equivalent to what the whole University of Illinois uses on a daily basis right now. And that'll be shared by the community. It'll be a gigabit's own, but the community will share that one gigabit.
Okay. Another audience member?
Yes, I live northeast of I-50. Now, the land that I have is not fully empty. They say it will not be many years... So, in other words, I'll never come under this, right? Whatever you're doing, we still will not come under this.
There are ways that this can benefit, I took the map down, where there's a gentleman seating, two hours away from you there, who has a wireless service.
Right.
And he will be able to get significant bandwidth to his towers that he can then feed out to you wirelessly, that he won't, he doesn't have, he can do that today, but it's very expensive.
But here I'm talking, not just myself, we're looking at Buzo Drive, Guardian West, Wilson's, Carriage Estates, Scottswood, not all, we'll go with this gentleman here, I'm sure. So you're saying our land, our property, will never...
No, I don't think I would say that at all. I would say that my vision is that all of Champaign-Urbana and the immediate area eventually has this fiber service. It has to start somewhere, and the government is willing to give us 80% of the money to start it in these underserved areas, but this is really the first baby step.
My answer from AT&amp;T was, well, this Pentecost, you'll be dead before it comes out. So is this, is this sort of the truth?
I think we are motivated by different factors than AT&amp;T. I think that would be fair to say. And at least the three of us and some of the folks sitting out there are really committed to making this a community-wide effort and reaching every single home. You know, my home is not in this map either, and I just soon have this at my house someday, I'm being just very selfish. So, yes, we...
We have the choice of cable or dial-up. And the young lady said that, and I was PrairieNet 15 years ago, that I thought PrairieNet was no longer in business.
It's still in business.
Right. I don't remember where I went, but they'd lost a grant or something, and they're no longer. So I was going to be talking to you about it.
So in the short term, this, when these rings are built, this will enable other providers to provide some services in areas that don't have fiber now, but long-term, these rings help make fiber available to farther areas. That whole blue area on the map could eventually all have fiber.
A related question then would be, yeah, a related question would be then, you know, assuming the money comes in at a reasonable pace, and we'll see the financials later, how long would it take, we're looking five years, 10 years, 15 years, to get fiber built the way you have it described in this map?
For everything, I don't know. When we see the rate at which we can do construction in a typical summer, we'll get a pretty good feel for how many, for instance, the rings that are going to be built are roughly 74 miles around the city, and you can make some assumptions based on how long it takes to build a mile of fiber. For the city areas now, or on those yellow areas on the map that'll have fiber to the home, there's roughly 64 miles of city street involved in that. And at some point, we'll be able to say, all right, with 10 construction crews, we can build 14 miles of fiber a month. Or, we'll have a better feel for that once we've actually done it, seen what our local workforce is capable of doing. This could be a five-year project, this could be a 10-year project. The city will have a lot of input into how fast this happens. At some point, you know, the revenue model that I shared with you guys this afternoon was based on, you know, prudent bankers making prudent decisions and giving loans at 8% over 10 years. You have the ability to issue revenue bonds over 20 years, which have a much more reasonable payback, a lower interest rate, and can raise larger sums of money earlier. I'm not here to ask you to issue any revenue bonds tonight, but two years from now, you may say, this is really working great where it's working, let's get the whole rest of the city taken care of. And that'll be an independent decision that Urbana can make on its own, depending on what your finances look like and depending on what your desires are at that point.
Actually, some other kinds of bonds might even be less expensive, but you're absolutely right. I like to hear that, that we have the ability to do this.
And I'm certainly not the expert in public finance, so I will stop offering public finance advice.
Okay. Brandon has been waiting to ask a question.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions about the CTCs from the community side, and then some for Mike, too, about the technology piece. But first, I'm so excited to hear, Abdul, about the 35 or 45 community technology centers around. I wondered, what are, if you could kind of list so people had a sense, what are those centers in, on the Urbana side of town, so people would have a sense of, oh, am I close to something, or, you know, where can I go to get some enhanced computer access if we get all 35 or 45?
Just to give some, the diversity. For example, the Adult Education Center has a classroom of 16 computers and one instructional machine that are seven years old.
Oh, wow.
And have a very weak connection to the Internet and don't have the software that people want to use. So this grant would enable us to replace all that equipment and raise the level of that lab for single moms and so on studying for their GED. On the other hand, the Urbana Free Library. With the libraries, we're talking about some new workstations, but mainly, we're talking about adding laptops. For example, there are special places where children are computing, and parents want to be there, and maybe they're not on the machines. And so this would be an opportunity to check out a laptop for use within the library and therefore expand the possibilities in that way. Also, the, there are other institutions in the Urbana area. There is a women's shelter, there is the juvenile detention. These are not places that are going to be generally open to the public, but they certainly have a constituency and a clientele that needs this support. I think that's, then of course, the IMC is here, and the IMC will also have a new computing lab in its facility.
And with those, that's great. I think especially, the library has had such a need for years. I'm so glad, I know there was some confusion, but I'm glad they got their paperwork enough to you that they could be part of... to you that they could be part of the submission. With those organizations, the, you know, Adult Ed, the library, the IMC, do they, do they have to deal with, with being a subcontractor or signing any sorts of agreements? Or, I mean, do you all just get a shipment of these computers and sort of show up at, at these places that are listed in the grant application and help install labs? I guess what are the mechanics for-
No, we're not going to be a UPS dropping computers off.
Right.
That's not the way this is going to work.
Right, right.
In order for a, a public computing lab to receive equipment and support for their teaching, they're going to have to make certain agreements. One agreement is going to be to go through a training program, so that we're clear that all the staffs of these public computing centers are familiar with the technology and are on, we're all on the same page with regard to what computer literacy means.
Yeah.
So, that's one aspect of it. The second aspect is, is that we think it's important for these public computing labs to have an independent organization. In other words, it, it's just sort of like when you're dealing with a vulnerable population, we don't want to end up, you know, acting as good-intentioned colonizers of these communities and so on. What we want to do is really empower the communities in order to act in their own interests. And therefore, we have examples in other parts of the country where we've worked, where a local organization of an autonomous, independent organization of public computing centers is an important body to, to govern itself, to set standards, to have communication and dialogue with other such cities and people within the sectors that they operate in. And so, for that matter, what we're talking about is helping that organization to exist. Because once we establish this public agency, this public agency is going to need to have interaction. And so, rather than have an interaction with, you know, one computing center after another, we thought it important to facilitate an organization so that this organization can have some more structured communication, and their interests can always be on the table.
Great. And, and in the long-term sustainable picture, I know, yeah, Mike was describing, some of the revenue from the users of the network goes to sustaining this community engagement and community technology piece after the federal grant runs out. Does that apply to all the 35 or 45 CTCs in that, you know, if I'm the Urbana Free Library, can I really, am I part of this network in the long run that will benefit from the sort of training that's being funded through, through the operations in year three and four and 13 and 14?
Yes.
Okay.
We're going to be successful to the extent that this paid staff, at the level of this tsunami that, that's happening in the first, you know, in, in the grant period, if we end up having more volunteers and more self-organization of the community, because when the grant runs out, obviously, we're not going to be able to sustain the staff at the same level based upon the revenue coming from the use of this new system.
Okay.
So, for example, if we have all the senior centers, this is the idea we're thinking about, we have all the senior centers hooked up, and we have one or more cyber navigators, as we're calling the, the new teaching staff, being circuit riders to service the senior centers, what we hope will happen is that the residents of each senior housing unit would self-organize and be of some assistance. We already have a pilot of this project at Clark Linsley, where some of the students from the Graduate School of Library and Information Science and the Informatics Undergraduate Club have been volunteering to assist the residents of Clark Linsley. And there are people in the area that have sort of taken it upon themselves to become involved. Now, we hope that really is the way things go, so that we get people who are self-organizing and therefore becoming the popular extension of this program. But under no circumstances do we think that we're going to be able to maintain a program at the level at which the grant will have it, where people are paid, where there's enough money to replace all the equipment. In addition to that, the, in terms of the equipment, right now, as I think you're well aware, it's very difficult for public institutions to contribute their recycled-out computers into the community or somewhere. Well, we're in dialogue with people in Springfield to try to change that with regard to the university. If we're successful, then we will have several hundred computers every year that we will be bringing into the community. And so, we have designs, for example, that say every significant board, every significant staff and officers of public organizations in the community will all be trained, will all have equipment, no matter what level of the income distribution of the community thereon. It really is like this. We're really talking about a new business model for the entire society. We're talking about, if you don't have it, then everybody is lesser for it. Think of a fax machine. You've got it, and nobody else has it. It's worth very little. The value of your fax machine is proportionate to the number of machines that people have in the community. And this is the same thing with regard to connectivity generally. If half the community doesn't have it, then we're not saving money, we're not saving time, because we have a dual system. Some are electronic and some are hard copy. And so, we need the entire community to be on board for it to work, for any public agency to work, and for it to work from any community. And so, that's our goal, is universal access for community skills and equipment.
Brandon, okay, go ahead.
A point of clarification, sorry. Not every single site is going to be pre-identified and named in the grant, there, in the grant application. There also will be some reserves set aside for the other important locations and organizations that we haven't had time to, to research.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, our estimate in the grant right now is that there are about 35 places we've identified. We'll be asking for support for 45. That gives us that possibility of 10, so we can find places we've missed and also new developments.
Okay, so, the, the library, the IMC, and the school district, the Adult Ed piece, are some of the named 35. But even after that, if some organization, you know, in a piece of Urbana that we haven't reached yet comes forward and says, "Oh, we have a lab, we do the perfect spot," they could still maybe sign up for one of those 10 slots.
Sure.
Okay, that's great. I think my last question then is to Mike about, about the key anchor institutions listed on the map. So, say I am, you know, the Urbana Free Library, or one of these, these organizations. Do those organizations get fiber to their premise as part of your side of the grant application? Or do, do each of those organizations need to do some cost share or some work to get from the rings to their facility?
Yes.
One or the other?
I'm sorry.
Or both?
The Urbana's not, the Urbana Library's not a good example, because they already have some fiber into the building-
Okay.
And this fiber will connect to the Urbana fiber and the Urbana library will take care of. But let's say something like the Park District facility up on North Broadway.
Perfect.
That's in an area that unfortunately, it doesn't look like we're going to be building fiber to the home in, but it's fairly close. And we will certainly try and find a way of getting fiber into them. If everything moves forward as we hope later on this evening, and ultimately, by the end of this week, we have the Urbana-Champaign Big Broadband Consortium, this consortium will be making those kinds of decisions.
Okay.
And this consortium will have representative from Urbana, that are representative, representation from Champaign, will have representation from the university. This won't be necessarily just Mike's and Abdul's ideas of what's good and what, how things should be. This will be a more open and hopefully, not quite as hastily, project. I am sure there are people that aren't on this list of anchor sites here, or there are places that have been left off just due to the rush of time. And any, nobody should feel bad if they're not on this list.
Okay.
They should let us know so we can add them to the list, but this is by no means, if you're not on this list, you're not going to get anything.
Okay. And even if I'm Urbana Adult Ed, would I, because they're one of the CTCs involved, would they have to pay extra, do something to get connected fiber to their premise to be a, a fast online CTC, or?
The CTCs, kind of by definition, we're going to just include, and we're going to use federal money to get that taken care of.
Okay, okay. Perfect, thank you.
One other point of clarification, it's with the CTCs, it's not a one-size-fits-all. We're working really closely with each of the organizations. We're going, we're looking, we're interviewing-
That's good.
And we're figuring out and asking them to, to help figure out exactly what's needed. We might go one place, and they say, "Oh, all we need is more electrical outlets." You know, we go another place, and they say, "Oh, if we could have a couple laptops."
Right.
We go another place, and they say, you know, "Oh, what we really need is a, is a complete lab," or even a complete building with a lab in it.
Yeah.
So, we're working really hard to, to customize to where the needs and the opportunities really are.
Great, thank you very much.
Are there any other questions from the audience first? Yes, would you please stand so we can hear your question?
So, just following up on Brandon's question, if I'm an institution that's not connected to the CTC, is that a reasonable institution? How much would it cost?
We've been asking organizations such as the school districts, the park districts, like those are the main ones at this point, to contribute towards this cash match that we can then turn one to four for federal dollars. And that's somewhat of a function of how close they are going to be to some of these rings. The sanitary district is probably a good example, I forgot them. Some of their facilities are right on these rings, it won't cost very much to connect those. Others of their facilities are much farther from those rings, and it's going to cost more to do that. So, we kind of made a package deal with the sanitary district to do their two main treatment stations, and I think seven of their pumping stations, so that they could get all of those facilities connected.
Okay, and how much does it cost?
The sanitary district, I think it's going to be about $120,000 for those nine locations, to give you a ballpark idea.
So, now moving to another institution that's not a, a big, a place like that, sort of, for example, a church that's listed on the infrastructure, how much is it going to cost that?
My personal inclination is that a church, we would figure out a way to take care of, but again, in another five days, my personal inclination will be less important than the inclinations of the consortium.
Well, what's, what's most important is the inclination of the budget, because no matter what your inclination, you've got to have the money.
Right.
That's what I'm sort of trying to get.
And if a church is very, very close to one of these fiber rings, you know, it's not, doesn't cost that much to get them connected. If they're a mile away, that's going to be expensive.
So, it's like 50 bucks?
No.
It's like 300 bucks?
You know, it could be 1,000 bucks, it could be 2,000 bucks. It depends on the, you know, what fiber costs, it could be, it could be a lot-
I knew a lot of people watching films, so I'm trying, I'm trying to get more of the numbers out on the table.
In each situation's going to be a little different, and we really haven't had time to have a thoughtful discussion with anybody about that. I, I probably have 10 phone calls that I need to make that probably won't get made in the next two days, because we're going to be working on the grant. So, at this point, we think we have almost enough money raised locally that if we get our state match, we'll be fine, and we'll be able to do the size project that we now have on the board. If it turns out that some of that money falls through, or maybe this ends up, when we can finally crunch the budget, we need an extra 5 million, I'm going to have to hit the street pretty hard in the next week to get some of the people that are sitting on the fence about whether they want to invest in fiber upfront or not, and see if I can get them to do that.
Now, let's give that conversation to the people in the yellow areas.
Mm-hmm.
If I had a house in that area, what does it cost me to hook up to the system?
Again, it won't be, the way I've put the budget together now, if you are below a certain income threshold, and I can't tell you what that threshold is, but there are, Libby, you can probably help me with this, there, there are income thresholds based on family size that would define you as a low-income household. If you are a low-income household and you're in the yellow area, zero.
So, it's zero?
At least a third.
Oh, and?
The electronics, the fiber into your home, a minimal amount of wiring to get from the outside of your house to the inside of your house to make it all work, total box. The whole package, we're going to get the federal government to pay for it. They're willing to pay for that, and that's what we're going to do.
And which, what percentage of the households in those areas are classified as low-income?
Very high.
Very high.
If you were to map median income to these census block groups, these are certainly some of the lowest ones in the community, if not all the lowest ones. I don't mean that disparagingly, but when we were originally targeting these, we thought that the NTIA was going to have us select census block groups based on median income. So, we were always thinking in terms of median income and looking at census block groups. It turned out they wanted to do the penetration of broadband measure, which was fine. Typically, I haven't seen all the results from the survey, but in the areas that span out where the median income's a little higher, they had much higher penetration, and where the median income was lower, they had much less. So, what we thought was a logical thing turned out to be what we found in terms of the research.
Now, if I'm not a low-income household?
Aha, and I'm glad you brought that up, because the vice-
You guys want me to sit down? I'm having too many time, I'm just trying to get good questions.
The, the Vice Chancellor's Fund is not designed to subsidize non-low-income households. And we really want to have multiple commercial providers on this system. And so, if the UC2B consortium provides services for cheap for everybody, that's going to discourage commercial providers from providing services. So, I think the consortium is only going to be in the low-income business. There'll be that $20 service for five megastand internet, and that's it. And if I think I need something more than that, we hope to have several, and you know who some of those several are, other providers that are available that would have more elaborate services, faster services, more bandwidth, more services, and they'll hopefully have several to choose from.
And how much will those service providers have to add to their cost to be part of the UC2B project?
The budget currently shows that at $9.99 per household, I believe. We've played with that number a little bit. So that if you were going to charge a customer, if you needed to charge a customer $20 to make it make sense for you to provide whatever that service was, you would have to add another $9.99 to that to cover your costs and make whatever level of profit you needed to make.
Couple more.
Mm-hmm.
If I'm a low-income user, and I have a problem with my computer or some, something related-
Yes.
Who do I call?
You call the Community Help Desk, which is one of the reasons why we are putting a fair amount of money into that organization, so they'll be available, there'll be people in the community, and maybe somebody you know that comes to help you out.
And what hours are they available?
I don't know that we know that yet. He was, he was talking about staying up pretty late.
I don't know that one.
I'm a friendly guy, you know?
Friendly, I love it.
I think Dennis Roberts had a question, too. Oh, let, you're not, we'll just let, go to Dennis right now, you asked first. Okay, go ahead, then.
Okay. Now, is this going to make that the people who I use, which is me, if you start doing all this, and most people then in the city can get your price, is this going to stop them from giving me dial-up service? Is that going to be worth it if we don't have only the people who can only get dial-up?
I wouldn't think, you know, not anytime soon. This, this is going to take quite some time.
Yeah, it's 15 years, truly.
Yeah. This, maybe someday dial-up will go away, but there are people that are in the dial-up business today, and they're apparently doing it profitably, so-
Because they, you know, they still have many people on dial-up, but they still can't do it.
And, but there are, there are some very nice alternatives to dial-up, and I really think you should talk to Peter.
Yes, but my dial-up is $20, and even cable is 47, really.
Well-
And as I have a laptop, and I go other places and use a laptop, to me, I think a lot of people spend that money on a guest talk, and so, it's worth it for the $20.
Okay. Well, we're, we're hopeful that most of the community will think that $20 price point is, is where it's worth it, so.
Yes, I think that's as well.
But this, we're not really trying to put anybody out of business, in fact, we're trying to enable other people to meet in this case.
Okay, thanks. Dennis?
Well, it's a very ambitious and good project for the city. And after the, if we receive the grant, there's going to be a series then of training episodes, and there's going to be required administrative staff to run and operate the centers and the program itself. So, I was wondering if you could tell me, how many people do you see being employed in the administrative and educational staff segment of this new community service?
We're talking about approximately 80 to 85 people being involved totally. Now, this includes the 50 student summer volunteers that'll be employed each summer, so that's 50. We're talking about 20 part-time individuals to deal with, to be instructors, or what we're calling cyber navigators after a program that was initiated in Chicago, Public Library System. And then, we're talking about 13 people, essentially being the directors of this more advanced community lab, as well as administration, administrating the whole process.
And that's for the grant period, right?
Yes, that's for the three years of the grant period, and then, as things develop, we will know- and then as things develop, we will know by virtue of the fact that the two years, the second and third year of the project will be generating revenue that will go into the bank. And then when the grant is over, we'll have a certain amount of money, and then we'll also have the commitment of the intergovernmental agency that will set, I guess on an annual basis, a formula for the revenue that will come to this community service, part of what we're talking about. And we're looking for that, frankly, to be something that will enable us to maintain that, most of that core staff of 13.
So you're really looking, depending so much on part-time help or volunteer help to establish this entirely very significant and new network?
Yeah, we're talking about connecting relatively isolated public computing centers to create a network that will then share in the responsibility of governing these labs. And so, for example, I think Ann is exactly right, that we're going to be sensitive to the particularities of each lab, while at the same time getting everybody at the table to talk about standards for computer literacy. Because we are talking about a universal system that everybody in the world has to deal with. And therefore, there are many roads to this universality, and so we want to be sensitive to that. And at the same time, we want to have everybody at the table to begin to talk about, you know, what is the standard of literacy that would then make for effective use of this technology by all the institutions involved.
Would the part-time employees that would be assisting in creating this new opportunity be required, would there be a requirement that they come as... Would they be expected to be students at the university who have expertise? Or would you be training people in the community who might otherwise, you know, wish to have some employment opportunity, and maybe from these low-income areas, to take on these responsibilities? In other words, are these people going to be already highly trained? Or are you going to give opportunities to the community at large?
Well, neither. We think that there are people in the community that are highly trained, that need employment. I mean, highly trained in relationship to what the specifications for these jobs would be. And I think it's fair to say we're looking at 10 full-time lines that have to be divided up. Even today, we've had a discussion about the danger of having part-time jobs for adults that are not life-sustaining. So that, you know, to hire somebody at part-time, but they still can't pay their bills and take care of their lives, so... But we're not looking at hiring university students. This is part of the stimulus legislation, which is about jobs and economic development, to save and create jobs. And so we're really looking at high-school graduates and Parkland graduates, and otherwise people who have become cyber-literate and technically skilled. And so we'll be working out a mechanism to hire people from a wide variety of backgrounds that aren't limited to the specific threshold required for the university. So they won't have to have, for example, BA degrees as a requirement. So we're really looking to hire people who need to be hired in their own community.
Okay, you probably would like some action on these resolutions that we have. So unless there's someone who has a burning question... Sir, you have a burning question? A question.
No, actually, I wanted to read something from the BAC perspective. If you don't want to hear it, I just...
How long?
It's a great interview.
Maybe, yeah. Public input? Sure, go ahead. Do you want to come up to the microphone?
I'm Peter Volk. I am on the Broadband Access Committee. That's what I'm sort of here as today. The Broadband Access Committee, or Subcommittee of the Joint Telecommunications Commission, was formed to help you develop a plan to bring next-generation broadband to the residents of the Twin Cities. Mike proposed this plan by which we could take the first steps with some federal stimulus money. And that's sort of assuming we can justify it based on the population densities and service levels. That survey is in, and as you can see, the service area, the yellow area, has shrunk dramatically in the last, really, two days. The number of people, I think, in Urbana is about 2,100. Is that right, Mike, in the yellow areas?
I don't know. I told them, it's about, I'm telling you, yes.
I think it's about 2,100 in Urbana and about 2,500 in Champaign. You had several questions before tonight's thing. They were, what were the specific scope of construction and operation plans? What is the sustainable, long-term business model? You wanted the U of I to provide the final grant submission and maps to the City Council with time to allow public input. You wanted to know whether the IMC and other things were specifically included, and whether it was serving properties outside the city limits, and are we employing local people to do the work? Quite a few of these questions still need concrete answers. And I encourage you to make sure that you have enough information in front of you to ensure that this is not a hole that you're going to end up keeping, providing with money. And as a member of the BAC, I'm very excited about all of this. It would be really fantastic if we could get this network up and going. But there are a lot of technical and financial and operational things that have yet to be answered, and a lot of the information has not seen public comment yet. That's what I've got.
And I think that this is just a step toward applying for the grant, and there will be lots of opportunity for public input and to get all the questions answered before we decide if we're going to proceed or not.
Actually, I think there were two more things. One of the concerns that many of the BAC members mentioned was, were that the UC2B Policy Board doesn't have any public representation on it. It has members from the two cities and the university, and two non-voting people that are appointed by the head of the Policy Board. You could alleviate some of the concern about there not having been much public input by dramatically increasing the amount of public input on that board. And second, I think the resolution before you is actually about July 21's proposal. And it would be good if it could be broadened to be more specific to... Or rather, more general, so that it can encompass any grant that ends up happening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Right now, we have reports of standing committees. That would be... Dennis?
One item came from the Committee of the Hall, and that's Resolution Number 2009-07-026R, A Resolution Supporting the Submittal of a Grant Request in Partnership with the City of Champaign and the University of Illinois for the Urbana-Champaign Big Broadband Project, UC2B. So I make a motion that we accept that.
Okay, the resolution has been modified to include the State of Illinois financial support. Would you like to talk about that, Libby?
Just to clarify that we're suggesting a third whereas, and that changes the title ever so slightly. So this resolution will be showing support for both the state and the federal grants submitted at Mr. Smeltzer's recommendation. So, just changing this to plural and adding the third whereas.
So is there a motion to amend the resolution? As we got it from the last committee of the hall, and so we need to add this third whereas and change the title. Is there a motion to do that? To amend it?
I move to...
David?
To amend the resolution?
I second it.
Okay, all those in favor of amending the resolution to include the third whereas on the State of Illinois, please... No, I guess we have to have a roll call on this one, right? Oh, it's just a resolution.
And this is just the amendment, right?
This is just the amendment.
Just the amendment.
You're right. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Now to go to the amended resolution. All those in favor? Oh, you have a question? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I have one brief question that I wanted to make a brief comment to. My question, actually, to Mike and Abdul, is... I know our original request to try to get, you know, the text of the grant application by last week to put it in our packet was probably just completely not feasible, and you're under quite a timeline. At this point, what's reasonable? Can we see a submission before the public council meeting tomorrow night in Champaign? Or could you share what you submit to the state on Wednesday? Given the timeline, when... I still feel that it would help me to read the whole thing, and I'm incredibly excited about it, but I also want to make sure I've understood all the things over the past months we've all talked about.
Realistically, I think we want to be done with our writing by midnight tomorrow night, so that we spend Wednesday morning putting it together, making sure we've got all the various... There are, I don't know, 18 different documents for each grant application, and each one of those documents is multiple pages. So I think we'll spend Wednesday morning putting everything together. It would be absolutely no problem forwarding to the entire council whatever we send to state. You will need to clear out your email boxes. They want this submitted by email, and this is... You know, we may have 100 letters of support by the time everything's done, and they want to see all those 100 letters as well. So... We can probably find a place to post it where you can download it at your leisure. We have the means.
I would be glad to take it... I'd be glad to get all the emails and compile them up, or put them in a zip file, or do something, if that saves you all any time. Because I know I'd like to read it, I know other people would, too.
And absolutely. I am hopeful that in the week after we've submitted it to the state and when we have to turn it in for the federal application, that the text will get better, that we'll hear from people, and we'll say, "Oh my God, I should have thought of that," or "I forgot them," or "I've had some pretty good typos recently." People are laughing at me. That, yes, that that'll give it a little time to ferment, and we would welcome feedback, because... You've had a couple of people working pretty hard late into the nights at typewriters, and a little more context is good.
Okay.
So that's... We don't have to give the federal government the exact same thing we gave the state. Where it's not, it's not going to radically change one way or the other, but there's certainly nuances and wording changes and other things that we could certainly add.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I will, yeah, I'll look to getting in touch Wednesday.
We could put it on the city website.
Yeah, we...
We need to.
It's easy for us to put up and post things on the city website.
We'll email to you, and we'll let you figure out how to distribute it.
Okay, thank you.
I think I'll be sleeping.
Now, we have a motion, did you want to add something?
Yeah, my only other very brief comment. Thank you again for coming and for all your work on this. I will be glad to see the text. I'm incredibly excited, and I hope we get funded in this round. To some of the points people made on the big picture. First off, yeah, this doesn't cover every neighborhood in Urbana. Like Mike, my house is not in the yellow either. All of us are probably in the blue, unless you drove, you know, a long ways to get here from another area, but not the yellow. And that's okay with me. I support the idea that we would seek this grant, provide access, high-speed access first, to these low-income neighborhoods, and I look forward to being part of proving that this is sustainable and can work, and that it can grow itself, and that eventually, we can together work towards the mission of serving all of Urbana and Champaign and this community with quality, affordable, fast internet. So I am incredibly excited about that and hope to be part of making that work. I think the intergovernmental agreement, which we'll see and is a piece of this, too, is a good first start. I think a lot of it's moving fast. There are things over time that I'd like us to talk more about. Like, I do still like the idea of some voting representation for the actual end-users of the system. If part of our goal is to empower low-income people with their internet access, I'd love for them to have a voting seat on, you know, on a policy board at some point in the future, to complete the cycle of them being users of the system, but also being part of the control of the system. But I'm not asking for any amendments in this intergovernmental agreement at this point. I mean, this is a first step, and I support it. I also think over time that we'll have lots of conversation about the structure, about how much autonomy it has, and about how much the consortium might act as an ISP or not act as an ISP. And I look forward to continuing all of that. I think this is a good start, and I thank you again both very much.
I've got a question.
Dennis?
Of course, I'm in support of this. I just wanted to know if you felt surprised that there were no, there were not a larger area that your survey supported to receive, to the door service as low-income? When I look at the map, the areas that I expect would probably be in there do seem to be in there, and that's the far-east Urbana areas and north of the university. But there are a lot of other areas that we sort of thought would probably be included on the Champaign side of Neal, and to the west, are not indicated in the yellow area. And I know that, you know, just south of Bradley, South Bradley Avenue, for example, was an area that I thought would probably qualify. But did your surveys just not support including those? They just don't meet the muster as far as the economic levels in that chat?
I would say we were a little surprised, but you have to remember that the threshold, the bar was not set very high. The technical standards of what you had to have to qualify for broadband were pretty modest by most people's descriptions. If my broadband only went that fast, I'd be very mad at the person that was providing it, because I expected to go much faster than that. The federal, when we asked this question, we were at Memphis at a workshop about this program. And the explanation we got was that they kept that standard very deliberately low in the first round, so that some communities, small communities, that maybe the only thing they have is DSL, and they only had DSL right in the center section of town. And DSL is kind of the lowest thing that goes about as fast as what they're talking about. But they wanted that phone company in that area to be able to apply for money so they could expand it out another two miles within that community. And they didn't want to cut out that as a possibility, a solution, because that was, having 768 is better than having nothing, or certainly better than having dial-up. So they wanted to really get it down to that lowest common denominator. So I'm sure there are people that maybe only had DSL, and that's certainly, we're talking about something that's more than 100 times faster for what our project is, but they really tried to keep that. Now, the next round of funding may be an entirely new definition of what is broadband. So we were a little surprised, but at the same time pleasantly surprised. I mean, again, having 768 is better than having nothing, and if 50% of an area that we thought was really not being served very well, you know, that's good news. Not good for the grant, but good for the community.
One of the interesting things about this is that we're talking about people who we would not have predicted would have this, but do have it. That tells us that people are making choices. And if we're talking about lower-income people, that means they're doing this as opposed to other things. That tells us how important this is, both for entertainment, but also for survival. And I think that that should push everybody to try to make this available as fast as possible to all sectors of the community.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Next, under new business, since we'll stay on the same topic, is Resolution Number 2009-08-027R, A Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Sign an Intergovernmental Agreement with the University of Illinois and the City of Champaign Regarding the Big Broadband Consortium. Is there a motion on that? Okay, Robert Lewis...
Second.
...says a motion, seconded by Dennis Roberts. Any discussion on that one? David Grothie.
I wonder who he is.
David Garrig, I'm sorry.
Tonight, the role with David Grothie will be played by...
Bye, David.
I just wanted to mention again what Brandon had said. One of the problems of the, the speed at which this is coming together is that there are some things that we're really seeing only now for the first time. I am disappointed to see that in the configuration of the Policy Committee, that the representatives of the non-governmental sector and smaller specialized users, they have a seat at the table, but they don't have a voice at the table, in the sense that they don't have a vote. That's something that I would, I think we probably won't have a chance to change it here, but in, as this continues along the process, I think it's very important that there's not just a seat at the table, but also a voice.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, anyone else?
Could I just make a comment about...
Well, we're just kind of right in the middle of the vote. Does anybody have a question from the committee to him?
Sure, why not? I'll ask what you'd like to add. I'd be curious to hear your input on that comment by our council member.
From my vantage point, I'm speaking as an individual, I'm also a member of the BAC, is that it really takes us to discuss the question of democracy. In other words, the city council represents the people of this town, and therefore, the city council is free to appoint, in your wisdom, whoever it is you think is best in a position to represent Urbana. And therefore, the idea of adding additional people, it seems to be, should not be confused with the democratic process. In other words, we have a democratic process here, and we have had public forums that have been well-announced. I mean, in other words, there's been a lot of talk, and virtually everybody that's mentioned in any of these discussions has been consulted. So the consultation process has been comprehensive, and the policy board is going to represent, democratically represent both cities. It can be expanded, but then again, we will face the same problem of representativeness, whoever is added to the board. So it is a much bigger and more complex problem than our excluding any voices. And the idea of the two cities and the university was really an attempt to be inclusive and not exclusive.
And I would point out that when the mayor makes an appointment, it will be approved by the council. Anyone else? All right, we have a motion to approve this resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the intergovernmental agreement. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. And I guess that's it then, right? I mean, yeah, I'd like to get back to reports of officers. Are there any other reports of officers? Ah, Tom Carino.
Evening. I will be brief. You should have received today an economic development report for this month. Just to highlight some items, V. Picasso, there is work going on there, which is the former office on Main Street. Also, at the intersection of Race and University, a couple of new projects. Council approved a development agreement for a one-story professional office building on the northeast corner. On the southeast corner, the former Wendy's has been purchased and is going to be reopened as a restaurant. It's going to be a Wendy's City Express, which relocated from Champaign, so that's going to be a new Wendy's City Express. The site work has begun for the professional office building, again, on the northeast corner. The 84-room Comfort Suites on Lincoln Avenue is now open. In southeast Urbana, La Fiesta is very close to being open at the former Margarita Space on Philo Road. Two new businesses at The Pines are getting closer to opening, Wines at The Pines and Frogs and Fairies. And then Free Star Bank and an outlaw in front of Meyer is now under construction. So you have the report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Dave Garrig.
Like it says on the sign. What's V. Picasso going to be when it grows, grows up?
V. Picasso is, I'm going to try to enunciate here, it is a tapas bar. It's a restaurant that will be specializing in tapas.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Tom Carino? Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to read a proclamation. Whereas in 1909, First Baptist Church of Urbana planned a mission in North Urbana and arranged for the Herald of Hope Railroad Chapel car to be moved to a siding at Ro Mine Street in Urbana, and whereas the mission became Herald of Hope Baptist Church in 1912, and whereas was renamed First Southern Baptist Church of Urbana in 1948, and whereas renamed, was renamed Pennsylvania Avenue Baptist Church in 1957 upon moving to 600 East Pennsylvania Avenue in Urbana, and whereas the church members faithfully continued to spread the gospel of Jesus Christ in Urbana-Champaign, the State of Illinois, and around the world through their support of 10,656 missionaries in America and to people groups around the world. Now therefore, I, Laurel Lunt Pressing, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim August 7th, 8th, and 9th, 2009, as Pennsylvania Avenue Baptist Church Centennial Observation Days in the City of Urbana, Illinois.
Congratulations.
Yes, 100 years old.
We have the minister.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just like to say thank you for the proclamation. My name's Rich Gregory, I'm the pastor of Pennsylvania Avenue Baptist Church. We, we feel it's a privilege to be a part of the City of Urbana, and fully support and pray for you and the council, and would make an invitation to anyone who would like to come to the centennial celebration on Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. And we certainly appreciate your proclamation, and we're proud to be a part of the city.
Well, congratulations, and we hope you get broadband too.
For not just that. Oh, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is the mayor appointments. Urbana Plan Commission, Andrew T. Fell.
I move approval.
He would represent the area outside the city limits.
Move approval.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Lewis. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. I turn it over to Heather.